All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Yukon Planning Commission meeting for this month. We'll start with the invocation led by Commissioner Gerba and then led followed by the flag salute led by Commissioner Baker. Please stand.
Dear Father, we ask for your blessing today. We ask for your wisdom and guidance in making decisions that are the best for the majority of the citizens of Yukon. We also ask for you to give comfort and ease the burdens on those who are affected by some of the natural disasters lately in Houston and Florida. And try to get some of these people through probably the hardest times in their lives. And have a, hopefully, an uneventful rest of the hurricane season. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Row call, please, Kathy.
Chairman Taylor. Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hatley.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Gerba.
Here.
Thank you. All right, the first item is the approval of the minutes for our last month's meeting, August fourteenth. Do you all have any corrections or additions, or do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we adopt the minutes as posted.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second to accept the minutes. Is there any discussion? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Gerba.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
The next item is for visitors. If anyone here has a question or anything like to address the commission for a non-agenda item, please approach the podium, please. Same line. We're gonna do the agenda a little bit different order. We're gonna start with item number four next. Doug Frieden.
I'm Roger Everett, and here on behalf of Spanish Cove, and as you say.
Mr. Chairman.
My.
You need to read the title before you can start the comments.
Ah, sorry about that. The item is to hear request by Doug Frieden, Wallace Engineering, on behalf of Spanish Cove Retirement Community for a planned unit development located at eleven Palm Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. It's a tract of land located in the northwest quarter of section twenty-eight, T twelve N dash R five W of the Indian Meridian Canadian County, Oklahoma. Described follows by meets and bounds, they're stated below. Does everyone here understand the tract of land that we're discussing? Yeah, okay.
And could you please state your name?
Roger Everett.
And your address, please.
Five oh eight West Bantamet, Suite three hundred, Yukon. And here on behalf of Spanish Cove, and we do have Doug Frieden, Wallace Engineering, and also Doug Blows from Spanish Cove in Clare. And Doug, if you want to, if you all have any questions or anything like that, Doug can address those things.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Frieden?
Would you like me to?
Sure, yeah. How about you address that first?
Doug Frieden, Wallace Engineering, four ten North Walnut. I'm here again on behalf of Spanish Cove and give you a little background on this. The PUD is in attempt to try to clean up the current zoning that Spanish Cove has. They have to come to the commission on a yearly basis to get a conditional use permit. With the expansion of the pavilion building, it's moving it into a new zone. And early on Mitch and his staff met with us graciously, and we discussed an avenue to get to where we need to go. And the planned unit development was the course. And it's, and the reason it's out of order, like we discussed, is the planned unit development will be based with C three. So the planned unit's gonna restrict the uses that we wanted to restrict to. And right now, we're in agreement with staff and be happy to answer any questions. I know this brief, but that's, it's kind of an awkward, you're doing a PUD after it's developed, so.
Yeah, well, we'll circle around and give it to item three also.
All right, and also, Don's here to answer any operational questions that they come up, so we'll be happy to address anything we can.
Thanks, Don.
I think the first question I had was, I think there's a, the city planner had some changes about section five one under the permitted uses. My question was around the child care center. It looks like that Mitch, that she would prefer not to have a child daycare. The adult daycare she's fine with, but not the child daycare.
The way this is written, that's the way I agree with, she's basically recommending that we just address the adult daycare and not allow the childcare centers what it looks like to me for family.
So I wanted to address that one first before you're done.
Don Blows, CEO for Spanish Cove.
And your address, please.
Three oh one South Richland Road, Yukon. So you're purposing Spanish Cove for the future is exactly what we want to do within this PUD. Adult daycare center, nobody had any problems with that. There's aging-related services. But we also have had in our long-range plan for years, even prior to me coming onboard as the CEO, to have a child daycare center that would help meet the needs of our employees. And we, like many facilities, have quite a few lower-income employees that struggle every day and to see a good chunk of their wages go for daycare. It just puts a hurt on them. What we would like to do is to be able to provide intergenerational-type care services that not only bring in children for the benefit of our residents, but it helps our residents, too. There's a lot of movement through life-plan communities like Spanish Cove throughout the nation to bring in childcare learning opportunities where the old and the young can congregate together and pass along information to each other. So we would absolutely love to do that, but to make it break even, we would have to engage with some other members of our community. We'd like to do that with the teachers or even with city employees to have their, some of their children be able to come to Spanish Cove take care, should we develop that at some later point in time. So that would be a benefit, and we're a public trust and we exist for the benefit of the community, but we would put a limit on that in terms of the number of children. But it's certainly an opportunity that would be aging services-related from here on out. You have to answer your question?
Yes, sir, thank you. Do any commissioners have any questions?
Yes, on that same page in section five. On the under-planned uses and limitations, the first one is the healthcare clinic. And services to individuals outside of Spanish Cove are permitted but shall be limited to, and it goes on to enumerate those. And they're all definable, and we know what a city employee is. That last one, residents of the immediate adjacent neighborhood. That's pretty fuzzy.
That's creative wording.
Yeah.
That means specifically those people that are in the neighborhoods to the east of Spanish Cove, to the south of Spanish Cove. That's, that would be my definition of it, just to offer that service. I mean, we don't have to open it up, but boy, it'd be sure handy to have a clinic just right next door if you're sick and not feeling good, that you could have some actual services where you didn't really have to wait in line a whole long time, like you do at some of these other clinics, so. But the clinic is, exists for the benefit of our residents, for our employees and for our staff primarily. But again, it's like the childcare operations to break even, sometimes you have to let in a few from the outside, and we thought we would certainly want to limit that to select groups. So if you have better wording for that, I'm all ears.
Anything's better wording, either the name of the neighborhood or east of Cornwell.
What is the name of that?
Well, Mr. Chairman, on this issue, how, if you define a neighborhood or you're gonna have them check in, I'm with whatever neighborhood.
Well, yeah, we're still running that same problem, though. We know you're adjacent. Do you have to have your address or?
Yes.
On your driver's license?
So if we had the street names specifically, the cul-de-sacs that are along to the east of Spanish Cove and to the south.
It's just that particular area. It, it, that's just gonna be a problem down the road.
Well, I, I'm good even excluding that. I thought that would be a great opportunity to be a good neighbor, but as long as, you know, if you guys are comfortable with city employees and school employees, I think that, I mean, we could give it that.
I just think you open up a, you know, a whole door there you don't want, 'cause then someone's like, well, you, the guy across the street, he won't take me, I don't understand what's going on, so.
Understand you don't want a can of worms with this. Any more questions on section five?
Mr. Blows, you might explain why you wanted to include city employees and teachers in this plan on medical facility, so people understand where you're coming from.
Absolutely. This is something that I have discussed with Mr. Crosby. As a public trust, the city of Yukon is the direct beneficiary for Spanish Cove, so there's that relationship there. And believe it or not, Spanish Cove was, most, some of you guys that have lived in Yukon all your life know that it started originally as a teacher retirement community. And the purpose was to have a perk to offer housing for people that are, teachers that were retired, to keep them from fleeting fleeing across the border to Texas and to Kansas. Well, it didn't help much, 'cause we still have that mass exodus, but those two fit really within, well within our mission. And so we want to benefit those communities as well, the city employees and the schools. Thank you, Mitch.
On the, on the parking?
Yes, sir.
That's five point one zero. You've got three hundred and fifty-two parking spaces now. And after full build-out, you'll have three hundred and fifty-eight, but you're adding certainly more than six units. I just, I don't, just explain the math of how we, you have six more parking spaces, but you're gonna have.
How many more units will this be?
How many units for?
How many additional units?
This would be for the complete phasing once we get started. So we're really, at the end of the day, at the end of twenty years, we probably will have added twenty-nine units for senior housing or somewhere in that neighborhood. Yet a long-range plan looks at, at starting by raising some of the apartment buildings, and as we go back up, we would be building underground parking for the residents of those buildings. And increasing the green space that we have out there. Also, possible, I mean, it's very strong possibility is to build a parking garage down the road.
I saw that later, was it phase six possibly? That's a possibility, right?
So if we're looking at the whole big picture, yes. And so right now, we're a community where people, our average age out there is eighty-four. Not every eighty-four-year-old drives a car, so, you know, we do have plenty of opportunity for parking right now. In fact, I asked my employees about three months ago to quit parking along Palm and Redbud. You guys may have received calls about that before, I don't know, but the streets have been cleared, and we have plenty of parking spaces still available with inside our compound. Additionally, as we construct, you know, parking is going to be an issue, of course. We've got permission from the grocery store across Bantamet to use our parking lot. We also now own that property right along the corner of Redbud, so the veterinarian clinic. But certainly, you know, as we proceed, I don't think any growth opportunity that would be reviewed without reviewing available parking and within the PUD itself. We tried to place limitations that, you know, we're not bringing in a whole bunch of individuals at one time. They're, it would be scattered throughout the daytime, especially for the clinic or for childcare or for adult daycare.
So you think three fifty-eight will be?
I think that's ample, and especially thinking about future growth, and again, we're serious about if we need to build a parking garage out there, we'll have more space long run as we restructure Spanish Cove. But it's very important that we, we begin with repositioning Spanish Cove. We're forty-three years old now, we're spending a lot of money on capital improvements every year just to stay up to date, and at some point in time, it just becomes too expensive to keep putting money into old buildings, so.
So, so right now, how many of the three hundred and fifty-two are actually purchased? 'Cause don't the residents have to buy?
How many are used? I don't have a great number for them.
Is it, is it more than?
I'd say probably about seventy percent are used, so we've got lots of parking, especially on the north end of the campus.
Just checking. I just mean that, so you're gonna add these units. So you said total, how many total number of units are you gonna add throughout the, at the end?
At the end, it'll be a plus twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, okay. But yeah, you were going up to five, two five-story buildings, so is that right?
Yeah, we'll be, it'll be multiple, yeah, multiple five-story buildings built together, but in segments, so.
So you're, overall, we're only gaining twenty-nine units.
That's the, that's the current plan.
But compared to services, the services that you, that you have now, it sounds like maybe bringing more in, and I think about the parking, though, we all kind of have the same reservations that, do you think with, with, you anticipate serving more residents or serving more people, that you would have issues with parking long-term?
I don't think we're gonna have any long-term parking issues. Our parking issues are really short-term. And even when we moved everybody off the street, I was really amazed at how much space we still have within Spanish Cove, so.
So you still don't see one, even like we do a child daycare or adult daycare, there's certain drop-off times for those daycares. It could be a huge influx at those times. I mean, I'm not sure where, where those.
If we limit it to forty kids, which is our plan, and about at least half of them, or maybe two-thirds of them are Spanish Cove employees, then we're not gonna see that huge traffic. And with the adult day services, you know, we would ask, we will either provide transportation to and from, or the family member would provide transportation, so we'd effectively be just a drop-off, so.
So what building's gonna house the adult daycare service? Sorry, Don. I'm sorry. Hang around for a little bit.
That's a, that's a really good question. I don't know at this point in time, it's just, it's something that we have to look at.
It looks at where it's gonna be, then, and where the daycare would be also, where would your parking be for that huge influx at five-thirty in the afternoon or something?
And it could be, you know, just trying to think through what could happen and all the possibilities. That's the purpose of this PUD, is to be able to look down the road and try to forecast the future. And some of these may not ever happen, but I don't want us to be limited in our capability of providing aging-related services, because that's what our community is focused on, and that's, that's our mission. So it could be that it would be incorporated into a new community center. Maybe that would be phase two, childcare may be part of phase two, certainly earlier than later. But, and it may be an opportunity, too, that we'd use the, the property that we purchased on Bantamet and Redbud. Could be an adult daycare center, which is already zone commercial, so I don't know what we're gonna do exactly, but, but, you know, those are plans that have to be constructed, but we want to make sure we have the opportunity.
Yeah, it's got one more question left in part five, or then the non-permitted uses. So who or what determines that something is age-related service? 'Cause, you know, we look at this, we're gonna put in a daycare that's not necessarily age-related.
It doesn't look age-related, does it?
We move forward on this, and then, so, and then a beauty salon isn't necessarily always age-related. And I like it where it is, but it's fine, but the same, what, how do we determine what's next? You know, what would be, who determines that and what is, who defines it?
Right, well, if, as Spanish Cove will look into the future and define what aging-related service would be, it would be services that offer a positive impact to the residents of our community, A number one. And, you know, that would probably be the goal measure for what, what we're looking at. How does it benefit Spanish Cove? How does it benefit the city of Yukon, our community? But, yeah, you're right, aging-related services could be wide open, but it certainly, you know, doesn't include building a hospital, or certainly doesn't include a bar. Or things that, you know, we don't think you guys want to see at Spanish Cove. I don't want to see a, you know, a dance hall.
I just want to make sure that the bud we're going over is gonna be, you know, well-defined. So like, if something comes in, Mitch, are we gonna, do they have to come before us again if it's a gray area?
If it's something that's not addressed in the PUD, it has to come back and be amended to add that use. If it's something that we feel meets the intent or meets the verbiage in here, then we'd sit down with the attorney and then we'd discuss it. And there may be a possibility it still would come back to the planning commission for review.
Is there any dates for the phases? Is there any idea or?
Phase two, we're looking at, yeah, at least two to three years down the road before we, before we initiate that. We'll actually start planning, hopefully, as soon as we start construction on phase one, so, but that's.
You know when phase one will start?
Phase one, we're planning to start in November, start construction with your permission. And just back to Mitchell's point, you know, everything that's aging-related services is a gray area, so.
I know.
I get it. On the home-based services, do you, do you do home-based services now?
No, sir.
So that's a new?
That would be new.
A new service.
That would be new. If you look at what's, if you look at the population of, that is aging, we all aging, of course, but there's a tremendous opportunity and tremendous boom that's about ready to happen. In the next ten to fifteen years, the population of people sixty-five-year-old, years old and older is going to double. So what we're doing is positioning ourselves and positioning ourselves well to be successful down the road. And is Spanish Cove gonna be the only answer? Absolutely not. There's lots of assisted living facilities being built. I'm sure you guys will have many that will be coming to see you guys for approval, but, but there's huge opportunities for, for growth. We're trying to position ourselves down the road so that we can put our best foot forward for the people and community of Yukon to be able to provide aging-related services. And at some point in time, maybe even a special contract from Spanish Cove that will allow admittance into the nursing facility or assisted living, if, you know, if they become a member at large. So, but there's a, there's a need right now, there's, just like adult daycare, there's, there's no adult daycare in Yukon. I don't know of any concierge services for our citizens, either to help with cooking or cleaning. It's mostly, you know, ministry-based and people lending out a good hand, just like the folks down in Houston are receiving that good hand. So there's certainly a role, and Spanish Cove would like to be a leader in Yukon to provide those services.
Does anyone else have any more questions?
I've got a couple, but for Mitchell.
Okay.
The, the main one I had is the maximum height of these buildings, five, five-story buildings, twenty, with a twenty-foot setback is essentially the closest you can get. And I know, you know, you're trying to make the most of the amount of space you've got here. Is there any issues being that close to a residential neighborhood, you know, from their property line, about twenty feet, you got a five-story building? Any anticipated issues with that?
Well, the buildings are approximately gonna be eighty-foot tall. The best thing about the roads that you're asking about Cornwell and these other streets is access for fire department. If you're talking about impact to the adjoining neighborhoods, I guess it'd be visual, you know, they could see it. You know, you're gonna be, you know, I think Cornwell, the right-of-way width is a hundred foot, so you're gonna be about a hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty foot, you know, from that west boundary of Cornwell, if that gives you an idea.
And it was mainly along, I'm not sure what street that is, but on the east side.
It's Rosebud.
Rosebud, yeah.
And Rosebud, if you'll notice, is an extra-wide street as well. I think it's a sixty-foot right-of-way, so you'd be about seventy foot roughly from that east boundary or property line. Or the west property line, those houses.
How many of the houses on Redbud does Spanish Cove own now? All of them or part of them or no?
Along Redbud, there's probably about three houses that we actually own. We own houses on Palm, we own houses on Choctaw, we own houses on, we're getting ready to buy one on Cottonwood and Cypress. We own about four houses on Cypress. We own twenty-five in all, so. And that's in our target area for growth as we, as we move down the road, those, that neighborhood, we're landlocked, as you guys are aware. So certainly, we have an interest in, in purchasing some of those homes as they become available naturally through the open market, but we definitely have a limit on what we could do, too, so.
When we're done, before you go there. So we're still on the phasing and the timing and that. So if phase one takes roughly, you know, eighteen months to two years, and then phase two is gonna be three years after that, or three years when you?
It'll, yeah, I think the completion from now, we'd be looking at five years for, from here, for that to be complete, at least five, five to six.
And so then three would follow us next, I mean, and there's, and there's some numbers in the order, but, so, 'cause that, was that a continuation of the same building, or is that just a standalone building? It looks like it's the same building.
Yes, phase two is one singular building, and then phase three, I'd have to look at the map, is that?
Hey, Mr. Blows, you might tell him how you're doing the next couple of phases, so they understand what's going on.
Okay, so phase two won't really even go off the ground, number one, until we know that it's gonna be successful and that we can market it. So in each successive phase, we'll follow the same pattern, but what we will, would require would be seventy-five percent pre-sold. So we're not gonna build until we hit the, those markers, and for each phase, as they go down the road, is that what you're referring to, Mitch? So.
Good, that's exactly where I was gonna ask you next.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
This is kind of tangentially, the, the people that are contacting you to move to Canadian, to Spanish Cove now, are you seeing more people seeking information who are from outside of Canadian County? That, that would kind of make sense with our cost, I just wonder if that's.
Yeah, I think that there's a good, you know, maybe about a third of our folks are actually within Canadian County, maybe forty percent. But a lot of folks from Edmund, from Oklahoma City, from, and especially western Oklahoma, we're like the, we're like the place they want to be if they live out west, because they don't want to go into Oklahoma City with all the concrete there. It's just like, this is as close as they want to go. So there's a bunch of our residents, especially from southwest Oklahoma.
Well, if we could get the basketball team to move out here, we wouldn't have to go.
We'd get the Thunder, we'd get the Thunder cheerleaders out of Spanish Cove. That was fun.
Okay. And one question for staff, on the exception two in the PUD, no, we're, actually, you know, it's number two in the conditions, I'm sorry.
Okay, two in the conditions?
It says revisions noted as numbers nine through twenty-five. I see nine through nineteen, but I don't see nine through twenty-five, unless I'm just.
They addressed some of the issues before she completed the staff review, so she made those adjustments, and then she forgot to make that adjustment in that last note. Because this document's been working back and forth for the last month, month and a half.
Would that be numbers eight to nineteen?
Yes, that would be a correction, eight to nineteen.
All right, any further questions?
On number, sorry, Mr. Chairman, can I, do I still?
Sure, you have four.
On exception twelve, page four of six. The third bullet, it's just confusing, because it starts out childcare center, family, and then it says restricted to adult daycare.
The, the Cove is asking for the childcare family center, and staff was recommending restricted to adult daycare. But they still want to appeal that to the board and ask for an exception to have the forty kids, I think it was the number he was willing to put in there. So that was one of those areas that we're kind of battering back and forth, so they're wanting you to make the decision, be the tiebreaker in what we're doing, or make a different recommendation in that use.
I'm still pretty worried about the parking around a daycare, that there's a huge influx of traffic that will come into Spanish Cove at five-thirty, between four-thirty and five-thirty. Would that be addressed, Mr. Frieden?
There, there was a caveat that the staff put on, that if a childcare ever does come before the planning commission for, or the planning department for that to take place, the parking and traffic would have to be approved with that building permit. So, so there, it's not a carte blanche, we can't just go and build it.
So, so there, it's not a carte blanche, we can't just go and build it. So there's, there's a chance that it will be addressed. And we'll have the opportunity to show that it works or you have the opportunity to say, no, it doesn't work. Makes sense, the building permit's gonna, gonna hold.
All right, thanks. Mitchell, any comment on that or is that, do they have to come back here to, back to you anyway to get a daycare?
Well, that's one of the areas that we need to address because I don't think it ever got actually finally addressed in the PUD statement. And that was one of the things that she, the planner wanted you to review and discuss in depth and make a recommendation. Cause if I remember right, in this last document, it really doesn't address-
Parking.
The parking.
Yeah, her recommendation under eighteen five one, five one point oh, parking regulations were adding a sentence that says parking count would be submitted each time a building permit showing the current or proposed count.
That, that wasn't, she didn't put that in reference to the daycare though.
But it would be a building permit.
The billing permits, yes, on the, the actual uses that you propose to put into the building.
Right.
Yeah. But in the first part, she's questioning.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand, I understand. I was just trying to address the parking.
Yeah. Basically, on the parking, what she wanted to do each time we have a building phase, address the parking each time, reevaluate it, reassess it. So that's why that was in there.
As, as each phase, we would have to come through with a building permit and address parking. That is not part of what addressing the parking for a daycare.
No, it wasn't.
Right, okay. That's the way I read it.
Because if you'll notice in the plan, it shows phasing across several phases, so. And it felt that we addressed the parking as we go through each phase.
All right.
Mitchell, I've got one question about the parking, specifically underground. You know, at the present time, we don't have any underground parking almost anywhere around here. What are some caveats to a hundred and ninety-one parking spots below ground?
Those were building code issues. Basically, you know, one of the things that we could have, you talk to the engineer, drainage would be one of the things we'd be looking at. Fire access, emergency access and egress, you know, those kind of things we'd be looking at. They're actually addressed by the building code. This is not a new thing. If you'll notice, Oklahoma City's got all kinds of parking garages, underground, above ground, mixed in development. So it's not a big deal like it used to be, but there's ventilation requirements and stuff. But they will address that through the actual planning process. It's reviewed by us, depending on what use it has in it, it may be reviewed by the state farm manager's office or the health department. But building codes address all the issues that we have with those and it's very restricting than what the requirements are.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, you guys have any more questions or any more things to add or who do you guys? Bob?
I'm still hacking on the wording of the five for the medical dental clinic. What are we opening that up to? Maybe I missed something.
They currently have, what they have on site is Mercy Healthcare has a building out there and provide medical services, like an urgent care. What they're proposing to do is extend that hand to city employees as well as school teachers because they're, the city's a receiver of the trust and the teachers actually started the Spanish Cove. And that's what they're extending for. They actually wanted to extend beyond that, but we beat them down or chiseled it down and discussed what we're down to now.
Okay.
You know, parking has always been a question, a concern in that use. Mixing the elderly and the young in that use, access.
These will all be states, uh, state licensed facilities, the daycares and everything?
They have certain requirements for each use and they have to meet those uses. And the facility they're in now, I don't know how all that plays in because they have to deal with the health department and many facets of what they do. So that would probably be the one that Mr. Bloos answers, addresses those questions to you on the mixed uses in the facility and how it works. And then when you bring in an urgent care or a dentist office or an eye doctor, you know what effects that has on their current permitting and licensing with the state. So if you'd like for him to address it, I'd go ahead and have him come up and address those issues if you have concerns or if you just want to wait.
Yeah, we can just wait. I think I understand then.
Well, it seems like we have a lot of, maybe some things we're gonna add at number three under the conditions. We've only, only had what, about thirty minutes to discuss this.
Yes.
It's kind of difficult for us to word those properly for a, for a vote, I think. I mean, we could do a motion to, to table this until next month to get all of our conditions lined out that we would like to add or, or we can just do an up or down vote.
Well, the two things I think we need to discuss more than over a cup of coffee is the entry into the healthcare clinic, you know. Since, you know, this is a city associated trust, you know, employees of the city and the public schools and our family members, that, that all makes perfect sense. The outlier seems to be the neighborhood. That's one. And then the other one is certainly the child daycare services seems to be the other outlier. It's the, it's the, it could be argued that it's, it's, it's an age related service because I, I mean, I've read a lot of the literature on the, the upside of having children and pets and ferrets and every other thing, you know. Whatever makes people feel better about, not many good things about getting old, but you know, whatever we can do to, to make it better is certainly good.
It does beat the alternative.
But it's, you know, also, you know, do we just discuss that for, for fifteen seconds and have a vote? I don't see how we can just write a extra condition and, and, and vote on it. But I don't think we need to table it. Perhaps continuing it?
Yeah, just continue it till next month or?
I'll leave that to the, the attorney on which we do, but it seems like a continuation is.
I'm strictly left to, to many of you wish to continue it, certainly that's an option that you have. You have a scheduled meeting next month. You could always set a special meeting if that's what the committee desires to do.
Well, we have a meeting next month.
That's correct.
And, you know, Spanish Cove is not an unimportant thing in Yukon. Spanish Cove is, you really can't think of two more things more important than Spanish Cove and, and the city of Yukon. So I think we would be remiss in even being a planning commission if we took it so lightly that we didn't take one extra month. I know that time is money. The present future value of money is well understood by the board. But I think that a continuation might be in order, but I would listen to reasonable arguments.
Don, go ahead.
I, I'm not opposed to continuation, but I would appreciate your flexibility on this because most of the things that we're, you really want to mull over and consider, those are things that should be mulled over and considered. But the healthcare center expansion is just pretty much a no brainer. And we've got to be able to, we would like to be able to start our construction on schedule for that. We're, we're looking at November and I realize October would be the next month. And if there's any exception that you, we could get to go ahead and get started with that, that would be awesome.
I think it'd be difficult for us, for the way it's laid out to approve it without approving all of it.
Right.
We can't just approve just one piece, we'd have to approve all of it. And I think that's what we're, we're hesitant to do without any true discussion on the issues that we've raised today. Any other discussion on that?
Well, if, instead of waiting a month, if it's possible to do a special, special meeting, I mean, that way we can clear the air on some of the issues that still we need answers for and.
Let, let city staff look at it and we can get back with you and discuss what we can do in reference to what they need to do or if we need to have a special meeting or what we need to do.
Yeah, I, I have no qualms about having a special meeting. Like I say, this, you know, this is not like a curb cut or a circular driveway. This is a, this is an important thing.
Yeah, if you notice, our next meeting is October ninth. So we still can possibly meet the requirements too. But let, let us look at the uses and what we currently have and what the conditional use permits has and what we can do. Because the uses they're talking about that's included in the PUD are not being in this facility. It's an extension of what they're doing, is my understanding. You're extending your, your current facility that currently has the uses.
Mitchell, quick question, is there a possibility for a PUD like this that you can do addendums after the fact?
No, because it's kind of like a zoning deal. You give a notice, a public notice and it's, it's, it's the notice process. So the more that we get in it, the more that we're comfortable with it when we pass it, it's done. You know, we don't want to come back and keep amending one if we can keep from it.
Would we, would we have to do a special notice if we give notification if we have another meeting on it?
If we do something for a special meeting, it has to be a special meeting notice. We can continue it indefinitely, which can be brought up at any time, but I think you want to continue it to the next meeting or if-
That would be tabled till the next meeting?
No, continue it to the next meeting.
City attorney may have a little bit of input, what would be the best on this, not knowing for sure where we're at and without reviewing a couple of things.
What's that? I don't think, obviously you can continue till the next, your next given week.
Well, we could, yeah, so insider, you're saying we could, we could say continue it to our next meeting and then have our next meeting two weeks early as a special meeting, right? No?
As Mitchell was talking about, I think you can continue it indefinitely. And then
Get to it as soon as possible.
When all the bugs get worked out, everybody's satisfied, then post your notice and call your meeting right then. I think you can do that, you agree with that, Mitchell?
I think we can.
I think that's probably the best.
Is that a seventy-two hour, is that a three day?
Well, yes.
So we need a three day notice.
But, you know, if-
It's, it's just a short time till our next meeting.
Yes, it's, yeah. That, that's the thing about, our meeting was late this month, caused several other issues. Let us review that, we can get back with you. Give me and the city attorney two or three days and we can get back with you. There's a couple of things on here that might help them move forward on their present use, but not the uses.
Let's, let's continue it to, till the staff has their things presented to us.
I guess we'll need a motion to continue item number four.
Uh, make a motion to continue item number four until the staff has a chance to review these things with the applicants.
Second. I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Call roll please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerba?
Yes.
All right. Our next item we'll list, we'll go over is item number three, is to hear a request by Doug Frieden, Wallace Engineering, on behalf of a Spanish Cove retirement community to rezone from R three multifamily residential district to C three restricted commercial district located at eleven Palm Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. Attractive land located in northwest quarter of section twenty-eight. Bound by meets and bounds stated below, it's the same piece of property we discussed earlier. Are you fine with that discussion?
Mr. Chairman, since you did the last item, you need to do the same to this item.
Yes, we are gonna, we'll probably then go ahead and continue this item as well. Can I have a motion to continue this item?
Motion to continue item number three. Till the next meeting?
No. Just a motion to continue this item.
Okay, amend that.
Have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on this one? Call roll please.
Commissioner Gerba?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Our next item will be item number five, is to request by Doug Frieden, Wallace Engineering, on behalf of Spanish Cove Retirement Community for a vacation of a fifty foot street right of way easement on Cypress between Cornwell Drive and Red Bud Avenue, Yukon, Oklahoma.
This one is, is kind of important. We're trying to expand the pavilion to the north and that will get into this right of way. And we also have water line in there which we have to relocate and we'll provide an easement for that in order to take care of this situation. So vacation of the street, it's, it's basically on Spanish Cove property now, it's not being used as a street. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions, this one seemed pretty obvious, it was already kind of handled. Commissioners, have any questions? Stop the motion.
No.
Can you read it? Mr. Baker?
I'm looking for it.
Whoever can find it first.
Pick yourself and put them up here.
I've got three hundred pages in the pad and I'm just trying to find the right one here. I have to read some.
This one is just make a recommendation for the vacation of the street easement known as Cypress between Cornwell and Red Bud Avenue.
We don't have what our package is.
No, you do not. It got left out by accident.
So we don't, we don't have a, a draft written out for this one?
No.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the vacation of a fifty foot street right of way easement on Cypress between Cornwell and Red Bud Avenue, Yukon, Oklahoma.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Any questions? Roll call please.
Commissioner Gerba?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Our next item is item number six, is to hear a request by Doug Frieden, Wallace Engineering, on behalf of Spanish Cove Retirement Community for a preliminary plat located at eleven Palm Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. See, same piece of property we discussed. But we need to continue this also.
This could actually probably be, go ahead and be heard along with it because the trade out with the vacation of the street, actually if you'll look, this preliminary plat actually has a dedication of a water line for the movement of the water line that's currently in the street easement in Cypress that they all have to move. And this is only a preliminary plat, so this still would be meeting the requirements of the current zoning as well. Or the new zoning too.
And also the purpose of this preliminary plat is to combine all the existing lots into one lot, so just verify that. So on behalf of the attorney, questions you may have on that.
I was actually fine with the plat. Any questions from anybody? No? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion, I'll just read it off of the item number six. I make a motion to, in the case of the application for a rezoning submitted by Wallace Engineering on behalf of Spanish Cove Residential Community, we have read the staff report, received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff recommendations cited in the staff report. I move that item be recommended for approval to the city council.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, we need to read the three conditions.
Yes, it needs to have the three conditions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Application, here are the three conditions. Applicants shall revise block and lot numbers to standard notation. Applicants shall provide a letter noting the proposed improvements such as grading, paving, tree planting, walks and installation of utilities as well as the timing of said improvements. Number three, applicant shall delete references to O G N E easements. Number three, applicant shall delete references to OGN E easements.
Second.
Alright, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Commissioner Hatley?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerba?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Alright, the next item is new business.
Mr. Chairman, we have no new business.
Do any commissioners have any new business, anything, discuss? No, alright, uh, open discussion. Commissioners, anything to discuss? Does the staff have any, anything for us today?
Lady that's in the audience, we need her information before she leaves, so she'd be noticed, give a, you can give her notice at the new meeting time.
Man, it's right there. Could you approach the podium, please?
We just wanna know that she gets proper notice if she'd like to come back to the next meeting, is the only reason.
Yeah, if you'd like to come to the next meeting, do you, you, you wanna be, be properly, uh, notified or? Okay, if you dress the podium, give your name and address, we'll make sure that happens.
I didn't dress up to come here, I came as I was, but anyway, I, my name's Stephanie Hirschberger and, uh, and you want my dr- I'm, I, fourteen-hundredth Red Bud?
Yes, ma'am.
Number two oh one, right now, I'm, I'm doing month to month there while my mom's on hospice. And she lives in the downstairs east side, long-term care, yeah.
Well, thank you, we'll make sure you hear about the next meeting, because we'll be a special meeting, I imagine, so.
Okay, yeah. Okay, that it?
That's it.
Okay.
Anything further? Alright.
Check fest?
That's right, check festival, make sure everybody goes out. Alright, well, our next meeting is scheduled for October ninth, twenty-seventeen, and this meeting is adjourned.